All right, you are cue to go live, Kristen.
Okay, thank you. All right, welcome to the May 26th, 2020 meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. This is the second virtual meeting in accordance with executive orders 2015 and 2021. So we are conducting this meeting via Zoom. If anyone from the public would like to participate, you will be permitted to speak during the public comment and also as we come along to different items on the agenda and for the public is given the opportunity to comment. We ask that during those times, you limit your comments to three minutes or less and please state your name and address. With that, Ms. Lutau, could you call the roll, please?
Buckler?
Yes.
Campbell? Kentner?
Here.
Yared?
You're muted.
Muted. Present.
Patterson?
Here.
Richardson?
You're muted, Mark.
For once. Here.
Smith?
Here.
Trotto?
Here.
Kapalansky?
Here. Okay, so we have a quorum. Next up on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, we have approval of the agenda. I'm gonna go through, if you all recall, I have to ask each one of you if you have any amendments to the agenda before we can make a motion as part of the Zoom procedures. So I only just have one item. If during the staff comments, Ms. Lutau, you could give us an update on the regulations being considered to accommodate businesses during the COVID restrictions. So then I'll start going down the line of people to see if they have any amendments. Lisa?
No amendments.
Tim?
Nope.
Michelle?
Nope.
Marty?
Nope.
Mark?
No.
Greg?
No.
Matt?
Nope.
Okay, I think that was everyone. Does anyone want to make a motion for approval of the agenda?
So motion. Support.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Richardson, supported by Commissioner Patterson. Ms. Lutau, could you call the roll, please?
Kentner?
Yes.
Yared?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from our April 28th meeting. Again, I'll ask each commissioner if they have any amendments or changes to the minutes. Lisa?
No changes.
Tim?
No changes.
Michelle?
No changes.
Marty?
No changes.
Mark?
No changes.
Greg?
No changes.
Matt?
No changes.
Does anyone want to move to approve the minutes from April 28th?
So moved. Support.
Okay, second and a motion and a second. Ms. Lutau, could you call the roll, please?
Yared?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kentner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, next up is Communications. Anything for us this evening, Ms. Lutau? Okay, that brings us to Citizen Comment. As a reminder, this would be your opportunity to address the commission on items not on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. State your name and address, and the commission will not engage you in discussion, but we certainly will try to address any concerns after Citizen Comment and during the course of the meeting. Ms. Lutau, do we have anyone on the docket wanting to comment at this time?
None that I see.
Okay. And we have not received any emails, correct? Okay. Then that brings us to our first item for consideration this evening, the Vibe Credit Union. If I could have the staff report on that, please?
Yes. So this is a proposed facade change for the Vibe Credit Union located at 3082 Coolidge Highway. I'd like to reference my May 17th, 2020 review letter. The applicant Zimmerman Designs is proposing the facade change. The existing structure is composed entirely of brick with windows facing Coolidge and the main entrance accessible from the parking lot facing the south of the property. The facade change proposed by the applicant includes an increase in height and a change of the facade materials that will complement the existing brick. The proposed, the applicant has also proposed landscaping, but no other site improvements or changes are proposed that would impact any vehicular or pedestrian access, safety, or parking requirements. The subject property is located entirely in the Coolidge District. The north, south, and west properties are also in the Coolidge District with the east property located in the parking district. There are six standards for review that I have noted in the accompanying review letter. The, there are a couple of concerns that the Planning Commission may want to address during their discussion this evening. Window coverage. The zoning ordinance, Section 13038-447A, requires that a building that fronts a street shall be composed of a minimum 40% and maximum 80% windows. It is unclear how the percentage of window coverage that is currently, or that is proposed to base Coolidge. I have reached out to the applicant. He has provided some discussion that he would, will then bring up this evening when he discusses with you. The Planning Commission does have the authority to modify some of these standards for review, provided that the site plan approval standards have been met. The height of the building is proposed to change, but it is below the maximum height for the Coolidge District, so that's not anything that is of any concern. The building entrance is proposed to remain as is facing the south of the property. The standards for review for the building entrance requires that the main entrance face the main street, which would be Coolidge. Again, it would be up to the Planning Commission to determine if that modification to the building design is appropriate. The other standards for review include the proposed development does not create adverse effects on public utilities or sidewalks. It does not. It will not impact or provide any hazards for the roads or the sidewalks. It will complement the adjacent site design for adjacent properties. The site design, the architecture, and the signs and orientation are consistent with the city's master plan. We have also provided the design and plans to the DDA. The DDA Design Committee has reviewed the site plan for the proposed facade change, and they provided an email reporting on the committee's findings, and it is included in your packet for your reference. Jennifer Finney, the Executive Director of the DDA, is also in attendance this evening to answer any questions you may have. The only other outstanding item that needs for consideration is the applicant has not provided a photometric plan or lighting diagram for the site. If there's going to be any changes in the lighting for the property, we just would request to have that on file just to make sure that there's not any light pollution or impact on the adjacent property owners. And with that, we would recommend, based on the submitted plans, and we would recommend the approval of the site plan with the following conditions: that the applicant can demonstrate the window composition, maximum, minimum coverage, 40 to 80% or in compliance with the satisfaction of the Planning Commission. Number two, the main entrance location facing the parking lot to the south of the property is accepted by the Planning Commission. The applicant can provide a photometric plan with the illumination levels throughout the site and at property lines. And number four, the final site plan approval from Department of Public Works, the Fire Marshal, and the Community Development Departments. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Do you want to introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, you're muted.
Maybe try again, you were muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello. I'm Mark Zimmerman. I'm an agent for Vibe Credit Union and designer for this project.
Anything to add to Aaron's report? Or are you just ready for questions?
I think I could probably take questions at this point. And if we need to get into discussion about window coverage and entry, I'm prepared to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Aaron, is there anyone from the public who wanted to comment on this item?
I did not have any correspondence with anyone.
Okay. Okay, so then I'll open it up to the Planning Commission for comments and questions. Remember, please to use the raise your hand feature so I can try to keep track of who wants to speak. Who would like to start?
Okay, I raised my hand.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't have those features on the bottom of my screen here. I, let's go, let's go through the five or six items here. One question. Is there any proposed changes to the site lighting, the parking lighting?
So, hold on a second here. I've got something popping up in front. Can you all see and hear me?
Yep.
So originally, the intention was to leave all of the perimeter site lighting. There is one light pole on the south property line that lights the parking lot proper, I'll say. And then there are three wall-mounted lights on the screen wall, the brick screen wall to the south, excuse me, to the east of the property, along the east property line. I had some subsequent discussions with Vibe Credit Union, and they would not be opposed to doing some replacement of the existing lighting that's at the perimeter of the site right now. What was proposed that would be new was parallel to the south facade of the building along the pedestrian walkway, not the public walk, but the walkway that is perpendicular. It parallels the long access of the building. I'll say it like that. So, doing photometrics for something that I'm not even sure what that is, or if we could even find out, is kind of a puffy. But if we go with a recommendation for new lighting, then that's an easily performed task.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I think we would request that if if the new light fixtures, if there are new parking light fixtures, I'm not, those walk light fixtures that you have with the landscaping on the pedestrian, how tall are those? The bollards, I assume, or what are those?
Yes, they're bollards. They're low. They're 22 inches in height.
Okay. That won't affect photometrics too much. Won't worry about that. But if you, if they do decide to change the parking lighting, and I'm not aware of any complaints from the neighbors right now. I guess you just really have one residential neighbor, maybe two, one to the southeast here. I think the city would like to see a copy of the photometrics. Aaron, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But if you're not, if you're not changing anything right now, that's fine.
I'll look into that. And I think the only way we're gonna get a photo, add a photometric is to go to new lighting. So it might just be easiest to go ahead and do that. This is a significant for a project, for Vibe. It's, I don't know, one of their flagship branches, I guess I'll say. And it's a very successful branch for them. So, yeah, what's that? Might as well just roll some new light fixtures into the project.
Oh, yeah, right. Absolutely. On the west facade, the 12-mile facade, are you changing any of those offices around? I see dark lines and light lines. Is there a lot of rearranging, you know, new lobby? I'm sorry, new vestibules and so on?
So, yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. So currently, the existing layout of the building is such that the teller line, basically, is toward the east end of the building, and the office space is toward the west end of the building. We are kind of doing a shake the box with respect to relaying things out to suit the current business model that they have. So they've made some changes. They do, they propose to do a lot of lending and mortgage lending out of this branch. And so we have revisited the, I guess that's a new layout, I'll just say. Okay. The teller line and all of the banking functions, those sort of pure branch bank functions that we're familiar with kind of needs to stay on the east end of the building because of the location of the drive-through canopy, mechanical rooms, back-of-house functions, vault, that sort of stuff. So we're kind of challenged. I'll just jump right in and say on the, one thing I was gonna mention is we are taking the existing entry that's probably 70 or more feet from the west end of the west facade of the building. So it's just way to the back of the building currently, and we're repositioning it or relocating a new entrance forward. In other words, closer to the west to Coolidge. Simply to, I don't know, give that elevation, make something more of the south elevation of the building, make it a little more convenient, a lot more visible to Coolidge Highway. So it's almost as if you took the plan and flipped it upside down, if you will. Move from one end of the building, the entry that is, to the other.
Okay, and the reason I asked about rearranging the interior is, you know, obviously, the big, the big issue here of the six, I think, is the windows on the front facade. I have no issue with the entry on the south facade. That's where your entry is. That's where it's always been. The parking's there. It's close to the pedestrians. I have no issue with the main entry there. You are, from this design, on the west elevation, you are substantially below the 40% that we have traditionally. Oh, it's in our ordinance, that our ordinance asked for. I calculated about 13%. I could be off a few percent. I did it quickly.
No, that's exactly what I get.
Okay. Okay, are you, it looks like the long window is existing. You're punching another window, or are you filling something in?
We're adding an additional window, and that gets us, actually, it's 11% now, the way the building exists. The proposal has, bumps us up by a couple of percents. And then, when I got feedback on the submittal, you know, I took a look at those items, and especially one and two, and the entry and the window coverage, and did a little bit of study work and investigation to see what we might do. We can definitely, by raising the head of the window to about eight feet, let's just say eight feet, and lowering the sill, so there's a ribbon window there. We can, and then by adding additional punched windows, we can probably realize 30% window coverage on that elevation. We're really hampered by the fact that this is a low-slung, flat-roofed, single-story building, and it's difficult, there's a structural steel frame in place that's, we kind of have to honor the fact that that's there, plus get mechanical lighting, et cetera, those kinds of systems above the ceiling plane. So I sent a sketch. I'm not sure if Aaron's had a chance yet. It was something that I passed on to Aaron just this afternoon. Didn't think, not thinking there'd be time to really circulate it to anybody, but just to sort of demonstrate that we've been looking at it. And I think we've come up with a nice, I think, compromise or whatever, in the spirit of what the ordinance calls for. And if you guys were flexible enough, maybe we could even count some of the glazing that goes on the, that sort of triangular entry. There's about 80 feet of glazing, although it's drawn back from the west facade. That would get us to a full 40%. I'm hoping we could make this work with the 30% and keep the building.
You know, I personally don't mind the elevations, you know, not as a jab, but it's kind of reminiscent, reminiscent to what's happening down the Coolidge with the Michigan State Credit Union. But I don't mind the front elevation, but it is substantially below, but you know, it's one-third of our requirements, our minimum requirements. I don't know how the rest of the Planning Commission feels. As I said, I don't, I'm not too worried about the south entry where it is as opposed on the main street. Raising the head of the windows, that's the hard part. That's the expensive part. Dropping them is probably relatively easy. I don't know if you can punch another opening or two. And other than that, I'd like to hear what the other planning commissioners feel. The only thing that's left is there's some site engineering comments that have to be resolved with. So I'll stop at this point and listen to what my fellow commissioners had to say. Thank you.
A follow-up to that, then, Aaron. So based on those comments, it sounds like if we include the glazing, they can get to the required 40%. Is that correct?
I think you said 30.
Oh, I'm sorry, 30?
Maybe you can spin on that, Mr. Zimmerman. You said you could get to 30 on the facade, and then if we counted the vestibule entrance way that's further south or further east on the property, then you could get closer to the 40%?
It probably would be about 38, 39% there. So if you're viewing the plan, you can see that it's kind of a diamond point, if you will, that aims due south. And so that, that storefront glazing that faces the southwest, I get it that, you know, it isn't right at the west facade. It's pushed back. But it is, if you, you know, view the elevation, you have a pretty clear view of that, so.
Can the Planning Commission waive that requirement?
The,
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's.
The building design requirements, there is some flexibility of the Planning Commission for those building design requirements of the window coverage in the building entrance, yes.
Okay, so it's not just the entrance. We can also waive the window coverage?
Yes.
Okay. And have we in the past included some of the elements that Mr. Zimmerman is suggesting be included to get them closer? I don't want to set a precedent for other buildings just to make this one get a little closer.
For my recollection, being here a while, I don't, we have, we have waived it, you know, but it's not quite 40%. This is kind of an oddball building. It is a corner lot, but it's not related to the north elevation, which is Earlmont Street. I drive by it every day. I live on that street. There's not a lot of glass on the corner. It's oriented to the south. I understand the argument, you know, that's, and if we, if we approve the entrance on the south, there's a substantial amount of glass on the south. I'd like to see what they can do on the west elevation to bring it up a little bit. And that's my opinion, but because it is one-third of our minimum requirement. It's not, it's not 35%. It's one-third. And we have, we have in the past, since this ordinance was written, we've gone back, in fact, further down Coolidge with that AquaTots. We made a big deal about it a couple of months ago, the visual panels. So I hate to make a precedent. I think there's an argument with the glass on the south side being the entrance, if we accept that. But again, as you said, Ms. Chairman, we're setting a precedent.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I clearly understood that. Ms. Buckler, you had your hand raised next.
I do. So I agree with Marty that it does set a precedence. I, I think when the ordinance was written, it was written in the perspective of a traditional downtown building and not this, which has its own parking and sits on a corner and is kind of in a, not as walkable part, you know, it's not, it's not immediately adjacent to, you know, it's got that parking area, and then there's the trophy shop, and then whatever, the new little, like, office space, and then across the street also has, you know, the library and the VFW. So it's not traditional in that sense. So I'm not bothered by the lack of glazing on this particular structure. Plus, I really think it's gonna throw the building way off because it's so low and it kind of sits there. It's kind of a groovy-looking building, and I think the upgrades they're suggesting are good. But it's like, you know, we put, we allowed a singles, you know, building in the middle of supposedly a downtown zone. So I think we kind of have to make some accommodation here. And I think an upgrade is warranted. It's a little older-looking, and I hate for them to have to bust it out. Plus, I think it'll change the flow. It's a bank, so it's not a retail shop where you have stuff displayed. Like, I don't think they want to display their money.
That's on the other end of the building.
Yeah. Anyways, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Kempner, you had your hand raised as well?
Yes. Um, so, did I hear it right? Currently, it's at like 11% of windows on the front?
About 13.
Currently, right now, not in this plan, but like, what currently?
Oh, the existing building?
Yes.
Is about 11%. Yes.
About 11%.
Yep.
I would like to see it get closer to 40, you know. But I do think this, it's an improvement. It's adding some windows. If we can get it up to that 30 on the front, I would be happy by that. But I also don't want to discourage people from updating stuff by having to jump through crazy hoops to try and get it. So if we can do a little bit of something with what the windows are or will be, but I don't think we have to be as strict as to try and pull 40% out, no matter what.
All set?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Yared?
So I think when, when we wrote that ordinance, the idea was, like, I think Ms. Buckler said that, and maybe even Commissioner Smith said that it was, you know, kind of in a downtown area. And yeah, this is part of our downtown, but this building also does not sit right. And yeah, this is part of our downtown, but this building also does not sit right on the property line. And I think it's more, more applicable when a building sits right on the property line. This building does have a parking lot to the south of it, that really is their, their front door, their entrance. So I, I, I'm fine with this. Uh, if they could put a little bit more, that'd be great, but looking at the aesthetics of, of what they're trying to do with the limestone, you know, the two facades that have limestone, you see there's only one hole punched into it. And looking at the plan, those are just two different offices, so, uh, and, uh, really it's, the, the room that has all the windows is gonna be a conference room, so, I don't know, I, I don't see a problem with leaving it this way, but if they have an idea or a way to get a little bit more, then I'm fine with that too. But I don't think we, we need to push them to get to the 40%. If this was right on the property line and their front door was on Coolidge, it would be a little bit different. Considering it's, it's a facade change, you can't really, you know, this, this works for them where, you know, there's no way you could get them to move the, the front door to the front of the building, so. It's not like it's a new building, it's, it's a remodel, it's a facade change, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, Mr. Trado?
Um, I really have seen responses, everybody else, I really appreciate them actually updating this building and bringing it up to a more modern standard. Uh, I mean, they meet all the current ordinances for parking and with the exception of the lighting, I really have no issues with it.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for the applicant. Um, you mentioned, um, that this is the flagship, um, office of the credit union and that they're going to do more banking there. I'm just wondering if, if they anticipate any, any, uh, increase in, in, uh, in their daily clientele of, of any kind of significance, is there gonna be any, any real uptick in the, uh, number of people going in there? I'm wondering if he could respond to that.
Yeah, you know, that's a great question, um, and, and I'm not sure that I really know the answer to it. One of the things that Vibe has been up to, like all banks, is, is moving more toward online banking. Um, they've always kind of fancied themselves as being technologically advanced. The, the demographic here, the membership here of this branch is actually a little older. Um, so I'm not sure how much further those folks are gonna be moving to, to have the latest technology, although, um, they seem to be taken to it just fine. Um, so, you know, I think they're right in, with respect to, you know, who visits the branch and who does online, I think they're right in the ballpark of what most credit unions typically experience. I think they just want to, they, I don't think they're thinking there's gonna be a great deal of growth in this area for this branch. Uh, we've done, and I've been involved with these, a number of, um, new branch builds where the membership has sort of grown because they've targeted the low, they, they've come up with different locations ba- based on the demographics and so on. So I think this is really, we're trying to do a couple of things. Um, update the building, uh, to be in alignment with the, by brand, which was plugged in with these other branches that I just mentioned, Southfield, uh, being one, Sterling Heights, uh, Livonia was the most recent. So I guess that's a long-winded answer to, to the question, but I think it's, you know, there's a fair amount of traffic that does flow through this place and, um, I think they anticipated basically continuing on with potentially a little additional lending. I think that might be the problem.
In, in any case, uh, you're not telling me that there's going to be any traffic problem or parking problem created after this remodeling, uh, is that a fair interpretation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, we can't predict the future, I'm just asking. And now the credit union doesn't stay open at night, do, do the parking lot lights burn all night? I, I don't know.
This, great question, um, well, here's what we do at, at the new branch builds that I've been involved with. We, we basically, um, throttle them back at midnight. Um, we keep, we keep the drive-through canopy lights going for safety, but, um, parking lot lights, et cetera, um, basically turn off, I think at midnight. May, maybe it's, might even be a little earlier than that, might, might depend on the, uh, municipality. But they generally don't run the lights, uh, throughout the evening.
So with the bollards along the sidewalk, the private sidewalk, you're not gonna have, uh, any, any real increase in, um, in overall, uh, illumination of the, of the, of the parking lot, is that, would that be right?
I think we, well, wha- what we'll have to do is, um, make sure there isn't any spillover, basically.
Right, right, I think I agree with Commissioner Smith, we need to get a, uh, photometric on that. Um, so getting to the windows, um, am I correct that, uh, the two spaces on the west side of the interior building are both conference rooms? There's two conference rooms on that side?
Actually, we have, it's most, it's just the one. Um, we have an existing server room that's tucked up into the northwest corner.
Okay.
Which is why that kinda needs to be left windowless, because that's a security, uh, mechanical conditioning.
Right, okay. Well, um, I, I would like to see some more glass on that side. I, I don't think we're gonna get to, um, to 40% or for reasons that have been expressed, do I think we need to get 40%? But the, um, times I've been on the commission where we've granted variances on, on window coverage have, they've been very minor variances. So I think we need to honor the, the spirit of the ordinance. I, I think, I think i- if there was a little more glass, uh, combined with the, uh, the, um, the, uh, glazing on the, uh, over the entrance, which as you mentioned is visible from Coolidge, I think, I think the overall effect would be, uh, justifiable. I, I don't think we, uh, we would be setting a, uh, a bad precedent, but I, but I think, I think since you've expressed an ability to get, give us some more glass, we ought to take you up on that, just to, uh, hew to the ordinance, um, uh, as, as best we can. So those are my, that's my input.
Okay, um, Matt, you still have your hand raised, did you have something additional?
Uh, no, I just didn't put it down, I'm sorry.
Oh, I know, that's all right, just double checking. Okay, um, I, I guess my comments would be similar to those of everyone else. Um, this is an existing building and an update and a renovation, and I think we're glad to see that. Um, and I think that's a reason to allow for a modification of the ordinance as far as the percentage of window coverings go, but it would be good to get a little bit closer if we can. Um, personally, I would be fine, um, with approving the plan, subject to the condition that the applicant work with the staff to incorporate some of the additional, um, windows that, that were indicated that they could be done. Um, I don't know if the rest of the commission would feel comfortable doing that, or if they wanna see this back again. Um, but if there's no additional comments, then I would be looking for a motion.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Um, I'd like to sum this up again, and maybe this is how we do this. Um, I like the composition of the new design, I'm glad they're doing, I think we've all said that. We're recognizing the fact that the entrance is on the south as opposed to the entrance at the, at the front of the building, um, which is what the, what this 40%, and Mr. Murad was right, this 40% was written, uh, with the idea of a, of a, a retail facade, or even an office facade. So we, people can see what's happening from the, from the streetscape, that there's action going on, there's, there's things going on. But we're, we've already, I think, as a body, have agreed that the, that the entrance is not on the street, it's on the south. And I'm doing some math here as I talk. Um, I think in the spirit, if there's something they could do on the west facade, uh, open those up a little bit, I think that'd be great, to give us a little more glass. And then recognize that there's another 850, 880 square feet on the south, which is really the entrance. You add them all up, um, we have, we have plenty of glass on this building. So I think, you know, we, we talked about precedent, we brought that up, but I think that the fact that the, the entry is on the south and we're accepting that, that kinda gives us our exception here. And I don't know if everybody else agrees, but, um, I think that helps and that, that, that makes it work. So when the next person comes along, we can say, hey, you know, that's, it's an existing building, they're making a vast improvement, their entry was and always is, always has been on the, uh, south, we've accepted that. We'll make an exception and kinda think of the whole as the south and the west elevation as a, um, as the, um, um, glass facade, or the glass percentage. Does any of that make sense?
It does, to me. Um, Mr. Murad, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I had a couple other questions for the applicant that, when I spoke earlier, I forgot to address them. So first of all, you're doing some extensive landscaping, will the, there'll be like a, a system to water those sprinklers or drip irrigation or something like that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Do that in all the branches.
All right, and then I see you're putting the flagpole right in the middle of the walkway. Isn't that also part of your, uh, uh, ADA compliance? Is there gonna be enough room to get a wheelchair next to that?
So, um, that, um, we're creating a paved area that serves a couple of functions. It kind of creates a little bit of breathing space between the building, which comes a little closer to the parking, and serves somewhat as an entrance, uh, and a ramp for a barrier-free approach to the building. Um, the pole itself with a base is, you know, six inch diameter, the base is maybe 18 inches. So you've got about four and a half, or excuse me, about three and a half plus feet on either side of it. I don't, we could, if, if, if push came to shove, if we needed to, we could, um, rather than have the pole with the walkover lights, uh, right on access with the entry, it could be shoved to the east or the west to create a little more clearance.
Yeah, and then those lights are gonna be pointed up, right?
They'll be aimed at the flag or flags directly, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just curious about that, wondering if there's gonna be enough room to get a wheelchair through there comfortably? Cause it's what, nine foot?
Yeah, it's actually, yes, nine feet.
Yeah, okay.
Where, i- if I may butt in, where is the actual ramp, the, uh, ex, uh, the accessible path ramp from the parking to the sidewalk?
So that, that is that paved, um, that brickpaver?
Slope area up, okay, that's what you mean by that?
That will slope up.
The sidewalk, okay, I didn't see, I had my finger on that.
Yeah, the idea is, because the, you know, there, we don't have a lot of separation be, from parking to the building. It's only about 10 feet there, maybe 11 feet. And so that little peninsula, if you will, that's brickpaver, that plaza, the idea there is to, uh, have that become the entrance and approach for barrier-free to the entry of the building. And it kind of, it just dresses up the area and gives a little, little better sense of place.
Yeah, you should be able to get a wheelchair by there.
You're gonna have more trouble at the front door than zipping by a flagpole, so the front doors, which by the way, will be on, um, uh, power assist entries, we do that for the various branch.
All right.
All set, Tim?
Yep, all set.
Okay, anyone else, any other comments or motions?
Are we looking for a motion?
We are.
I guess everybody's looking at me, although I can't see him. Um, okay, I'll make a motion, unless someone else wants to. Okay, um, I'd make a motion, uh, site plan, SP 0120, facade change, recommend approval with the following. If and when there's new site lighting, we wanna see a photometrics plan, we talked about that. Uh, number two, we recognize that the entry is not on the front of the building, but the actual front entry of the building is on the south, it's existing and they're reworking that. We recognize that the west front elevation is well short of the required 40% that's in our ordinance. We would like to see them get a little more, tweak it, get a little more glass out of it, out of the west entry, but due to the fact that the entry is on the south and there's ample glass along there, uh, I believe we are, in the interest of the intent of the ordinance, we are, we, um, we are satisfied waiving that amount, the required amount on the west elevation. Um, the only other item is there is some site engineering issues that, uh, need to be addressed. And I think we have that letter, but we'll, we'll just leave it at that, was there anything I left out?
I, I don't think so. Anyone else? Or seconds?
Seconding.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
With the photometrics, are we asking them to bring the photometrics back to us? Or do we think staff can handle that?
I think staff could handle that.
I think staff can handle that.
So do I.
Yes, does staff think they can handle that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Trado, go ahead.
Um, is anybody, is there any changes that are gonna affect the logo bikes that are going in on the north side of the building? Any problems with that?
Yeah.
No, just wanna confirm it.
Got that. Okay, um, so I think I have to go through and ask everyone if they have any amendments, is that right, Aaron, for this one too?
Yes.
Okay, so I will go down the, the list then. Lisa, any changes to the motion?
No.
Tim?
No.
Michelle? Any changes to the motion, no. Marty?
No, I made it.
Mark?
No.
Fred?
No.
Matt?
No.
Okay, Ms. Shuto, could you call the roll, please?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trado?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes. Okay, congratulations, we look forward to seeing that, um, improvement in the near future.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks. Okay, next up we have Oxford Merchants Park, SP 0220. Um, I don't know, Ms. Shuto, or, or are you gonna be doing the staff report on this, or should we just go right to parks?
Um, I can give you a brief intro of mine if you'd like, if not, uh, we can dive right into parks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I'd like to reference my, um, May 17th, uh, review letter for the development of the Merchants Park. Um, this park is located between Oxford and Cambridge and Bacon and Oakshire, and encompasses approximately 7.5 acres. It includes, uh, three separate parcels and a butts, uh, res- single-family residential. Uh, the site currently includes two baseball diamonds, playground structures, a large open field and parking areas along Bacon and Cambridge. Um, this park has been, uh, in the works for this type of development for many years. Theresa McGarleton, the Parks and Rec Director, has been leading this project in consultation with HRC and DPW. Um, she has, uh, applied for, uh, a grant, a land and water conservation fund grant administered through the, uh, Michigan Department of Natural Resources. Um, Ms. McGarleton, Eddie Zmisch and Adriana McFlure from HRC will be in attendance, are in attendance this evening, will be able to answer any questions related to the grant or, uh, the HRC patients. Um, this proposal includes, uh, the development of- Um, this proposal includes uh, the development of the park where there is a, a walking trail surrounding the park. Uh, there will be a um, restroom facilities and equipment building in the center as well as a splash park. Um, the development of this park uh, is located within the community center district. And as such requires the approval of planning commission uh, for site plan approval. Um, additionally, per section one thirty-eight dash four zero nine of the zoning ordinance, uh, any developments uh, within the community center district. Requires public notice, notification of all property owners within three hundred feet of the. Of the property. Uh, a public hearing is not required, but the public notice was sent by mail um, per, per the ordinance. Um, there are the six standards of review that are, that we've gone through uh, previously and um. Uh, I don't see any issues or any uh, problems with uh, any, anything related to this proposal. Um, and we recommend approval of development of Merchants Park as presented.
Okay, thank you. Theresa, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, I think Erin did great. Thank you, Erin. Uh, just uh, one clarification. We applied for the grant and received the grant. Were, were, we were, we received the grant uh, at the, in December of two thousand and eighteen. Um, it then uh, goes to National Park Service for uh, full approval. That was received in July of two thousand and nineteen. Um, city council has funded um, both a portion of a grant match. And also additional work for um, additional work that's going to be done at the park for the last two budgets. We've just continued over. Um, we've had to show obviously that we're funding the grant portion. Um, the match and then also the additional funds and that's happened for the last two budget years and will continue to be carried on. Um, we are in the final stages uh, of looking of the DNR, receiving bids and specs, which is also what planning commission has seen. Uh, this project has been uh, in development for a very long time. Uh, really, the city has been talking about it since probably around two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. And in two thousand and fourteen, city council purchased three acres of the park. From the school district. At that point, the city decided to do a real development and plan for the park, which happened in two thousand and sixteen. I actually spoke to the planning commission, I believe, in early two thousand and seventeen. Um, and plans have. You come a long way since then, but really the exact same elements that we talked about in two thousand and seventeen. The walkway, the splash pad and the restrooms are, are the same as they were then. Um, we just have a lot more meat to them, obviously. You've seen the specs package. Um, as Erin said, uh, Adriana and Eddie are here from HRC. Um, we're excited about uh, getting to the stage. It's, it's been many years now and uh, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure we're, I, I know that we're all looking forward to this. Um. Is there anyone from the planning commission who has questions or comments on this item? Marty?
Very minor. Is there any proposed lighting on this site that will require photometrics to protect the neighbors to the uh, east?
Not at this point, Adriana, if you wanna speak about that a little bit more, but not in this specific um, stage.
Okay.
That's correct, Teresa. Right now, the only lighting that's proposed as part of the project is lighting on the restroom building. So there's four lights, one in each facade. They're full cutoff, so they don't shine out. Um, and the building is sort of at the, you know, kind of more towards the center of the site, so there's no concern about uh, light reaching the perimeter. Of the property.
Okay, thank you. And I realize we only have a few pages of the uh, set of drawings. I assume these are sealed somewhere. We don't get in trouble with our private applicants. We require everything to be sealed. I assume they're sealed, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And the last one, these are all minor, last ones are uh, very minor. On page two of the report. Uh, I think there's a typo. A wall shall be constructed, split face block, cable roof supposed to be wood trimmed, I think metal roofing, not metal siding. Not that that really matters to anybody, but it's a different siding, so, or different metal, so.
There's, there's actually a tiny bit of, of metal siding, just on the front and back gables. Yes, it is metal roof.
The standing seam?
Standing seam, yes.
Oh, that's what it says right here. I just saw it as I said that, so, okay. Uh, like I said, those are all very minor, but that's all I have.
Okay, um, Erin, I just realized I forgot to ask if there was anyone from the public that wanted to comment on this item? We received any emails?
We'll hand it over to Tori to moderate. She has the full listing.
Okay, T- Tori?
Yes, so um, just as a brief reminder for everyone that's in the meeting. Uh, you can utilize the raise your hand function um, within Zoom, or you can physically raise your hand. Um, I will kind of go down the list, so just be patient with me. Um, if you are calling in, cause I do see we have callers, um, just make sure you select the star nine um, on your phone. And that'll indicate your hand is raised. I will announce you by the last four digits of your phone number. Um, and uh, as a reminder, you only have three minutes to speak. Once your three minutes are up, I will. And then we'll move on to the. Okay, so first person that I see, um. So I see a, a Ben. Go ahead, and I'm gonna lower your hand. You have three minutes, starting now.
Hi Tori, thank you. First, I wanna thank Teresa for um, answering all of our questions um, this past week and a half. So we're on the corner of uh, Oakshire and Cambridge at two zero one one Oakshire. Um, I have some concerns about things that are not being addressed at this time that are going to be moved to um, twenty twenty-one. But I'd like to discuss them in advance, um, just knowing that uh, through different city conversations and seeing things with. Things such as um. Oh, what's her, Vincent Garage and other parking issues that have been a challenge for the city over the course of the last couple of years. Um, I've seen how they can escalate. Um, so. Every fall, the Berkeley Steelers come in uh, right on our corner here and we're kind of on the hot corner. Um, and it's a very, very busy section. Um, there is an additional parking provided for all of the people that are in the corners. Um, it's overflow, it turned into a one lane street. There isn't uh, proper. Um, protection for residents. Uh, people blow through the stop sign quite, it, it's. It's not a safe time. Everybody has to be very careful. So, um, what I would like for consideration are. What are we going to do or what can we do? Can we think in advance of the parking challenges? Uh, blocking off as they are on Bacon, where there is no parking allowed on the side streets. Um, the city plans call for an extension of the parking um, right up to the back of our personal property line. Um, I had actually reached out to the city, to Erin, to ask if there was survey work to be able to be done. Um, just to make sure that the proper variances were in place when this happened for the parking. Um, and that was not an option that was provided by the city. Um, as a resident to all of those on the east side, I do feel it should be the city's responsibility to lay out the survey and the variance. So that it protects the property owner's property and it shouldn't come to their expense. Um, also some concerns as well uh, about. Controls over non-city residents um, using and accessing the park. I understand that because of the grant usage, that. It, it's hard to restrict that, um, but we're also inviting. What I'm concerned about potentially being uh, very big crowds in the area that could um. Not necessarily be a benefit for the residents there, but actually more of a nuisance. So, listen, uh. I love the expansion, I'm all for it. I just wanna lay protections in, and I think there are a few things that just need to be addressed um, in advance before we. Move forward on that. That's all. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Next hand that I see, and I apologize if I don't state your name, or last name correctly, Carolyn Nowaski. Unmute yourself.
So funny enough, I live across the street from Ben, so. Um, we are on the east side, um, or older side of uh, Ax- of Oakshire, between Cambridge and Oxford. I'm closer, we're closer to Cambridge, and um, we've had some flooding issues, so I'm just curious to understand if this. You know, where the splash pad is kind of like draining to, if this is gonna be impacted all for. You know, that here, um. If we get heavy rain or anything like that, which obviously, you know, these days it's all too common. Um, so, I'm just curious about, you know, the flooding concerns or if there are any and how we'll address that. I know that we have a combined sewer system here in Berkeley, so. Um, as I've mentioned, you know, if we get a heavy dump or it's been a concern at least of ours, um. So I just wanna understand how that's being addressed. And then also, um. This was something that was mentioned to me, uh, and I just thought I'd pass it along, cause I, I kind of agree. Uh, the bathrooms too, over by, um, let's say the park over by the middle school, right? They're not really kept up, uh, so I'm just curious if there's gonna be any kind of. If there's any plan in place for that. Um, any kind of scheduled maintenance or anything like that, where we can just, you know, make sure that it's taken care of and, you know, keep it nice and clean. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Mister Hadfield. Unmute, yeah? Maybe?
Hello?
There you go.
Hi guys. Uh, real quick, my name is Andrew Hadfield. I'm the football general manager for the Berkeley Steelers. Um, our direct concerns, um, I've attempted to be in contact with the city as much as possible as this process is going on. Um, the Merchants Field before the houses were built has been our home for forty-three years. And going into this process, uh, you go back many years when the houses on Oakshire were built. We lost half of our field and we actually had to move into the outfield of the south, of the softball fields. With this project going in, uh, our biggest concern is where we would be able to practice. We are the only youth football. That supports basically Northern Oak Park, Huntington Woods and Berkeley, uh, obviously we do cheerleading as well. And with that being our only home practice field and the limited space in Berkeley. The current designs, at least what is it appearance, doesn't really show a lot of room for us to be able to practice and maintain uh, the youth football in the community. That's been one of our concerns, um, between the sidewalk layouts, the position of uh, the facilities. Um, makes it extremely difficult because we basically lose the entire outfield. Um, for the softball side of it to use, as well as the Northern Park and the southern side of the splash pad makes it very difficult. So our concern and uh, we know the city's best interest and there's only a hundred and fifty of us a year. Uh, but something that I was a athlete in back when I was eight years old, and I'm glad that the tradition has continued for the Berkeley Steelers. Um, but if we are to lose this facility and location, our concern is there's pretty much nowhere else in the city that's left. For us to be able to practice. Uh, it would most likely consider making us move into Southfield at Oak Park. Um, and there's not a lot of room there. The only location that we've possibly discussed is Lays and Bee, but they also run. Afternoon games and events out of that field. And if there was a softball game going on, then we have nowhere to practice for the three months. From August through uh, the beginning, uh, end of October. So that's our direct concern, something for everyone to consider is just a home for the uh, Berkeley Steelers youth football. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have a Mister Jay Rogers. Alright, you're free to speak.
Thank you. Um, my name's Jay Rogers. I live at two three one two Phillips, which is the corner of Phillips and Oxford. Um, a few questions, concerns. One, I'm interested in the status of the bacon lot that's at Phillips and Oxford. Um, hopeful that there would be a potential to incorporate it into the larger park plans. Um, potentially even as additional parking, because I know that is a concern of many neighbors. Um, my second item would be crosswalks and stop signs. Um, so several years ago, the stop signs and crosswalks at the intersections of. Phillips and Oxford and Phillips and Cambridge were removed for traffic flow. Um, I believe with a remodeling of the park, it would be prudent to reinsert those. Um, in order to slow the traffic flow around the park, um, and also because they serve as entrance ways to the park. So I think it would be. Help improve the safety of our citizens, especially the kids crossing over into the park. I think those are my two concerns today.
Thank you very much. So I'm not seeing any other hands outside. Oh, there, there you go. Uh, Mindy Marks, go ahead and. Oh wait.
I just wanted to second what Ben said regarding the parking um, across the street from him at Oakshire and Cambridge. And right now, when it's football, soccer or baseball season. The parking is horrendous. You can't even get through half the time. You have to pull over and there's gonna be so many more people there with this. Splash park and everything, which again is a great opportunity, I think, but. Right now, there's no room to accommodate all the people that come for the sports. And when if you're gonna have a baseball game at the same time, or soccer or football. You know, the parking is terrible. You have kids running in the street because they have to cross the street to get to the cars. And I just think it's gonna be a logistic nightmare with the parking and it's not, you know, it's not safe. So I just wanted to second everything Ben said. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, another person that we have, so they're labeled as iPhones, so if you could please state your name and place of residency for us, so we know who we're speaking with.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Yes, this is Carrie Passman. I am over on Harvard, the corner of Harvard and Berkeley. I've been a resident with Berkeley for um, forty years, well, forty plus years, but I'm a fourth generation. And um, it's just been a long time living here that we've listened to. The requests for a pool, for an outdoor pool. And I know that the community, that many of, much of the board is against the idea of a pool. I know that we've gone back and forth and back and forth. But my main concern is with regards to making sure that we're capturing the full, the needs of what the community wants as a whole. I really don't think that this issue's been, I mean, I, I heard um, the presenters before stating that people are excited. And that this has been on the books for a very long time coming, and it's true. It has been on the residents. Like, um. It has, it has been talked about, about amongst the neighborhood, um, but it's also been, it's also been the inclusion, included in a plan. With an outdoor pool as part, is, is maybe more, more or less an outdoor area. There's much green space as um, Steelers have been using it for like thirty years now. Um, right now, um, me personally, I know the pool is very expensive. I don't, I, I couldn't afford it right now. I don't think anybody can afford it right now with what, with what we're facing with the pandemic. But that brings up my ne- my next issue. We are right now in a complete state of uncertainty. Um, I know you've got a grant out there that I think, I, I don't know, I don't know if it can be applied anywhere else. I don't have that knowledge. But come fall, I mean, we're all hoping, I'm a dad's club board member, and we're all hoping that we're gonna be able to, well. People are talking about having overlying sports throughout the city. We could potentially have baseball, softball, soccer. Football and, I mean, not to mention the ones that my family isn't participating in, that I don't even know when their schedules are. Track and field and so on and so forth. We don't have green space as it is. Um, with the closings before Labor, until Labor Day and suchnot. I mean, for us to go building a splash pad right now, I mean, I just, it just, I don't think. The commu- I've got a bunch of reasons behind it, to be honest with you, but I just, in my own personal opinion. I just sat through a master, one of, some of the master plan. I'm starting to listen on the master planning, and I just don't think that we have a plan in place. Or have given it. And like, uh, I don't think we've given a full Berkeley view of what we, what we have. JC is set up much to what you wanna do here at Merchants, with the, with the exception of the splash pad. But we haven't maintained that. We haven't cleaned that up. We have ample space and we're just not utilizing it. I don't think we've done a study. And I'm rambling so much, I'm probably gonna run out of time, so I'll just be quiet now. I think I've got all my points across.
Thank you. Uh, another comment, uh, we have from an Adam Russell. Seeing his hands up.
Alright, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead when you're ready.
Sorry, I hit, I hit the wrong button. Okay, um. We live on Cummings between Oxford and Cambridge, and we are super, super excited about having a splash pad. Actually, we have two young children, and so this would be amazing activity for us. Um, I guess the question we had is. question we had is, right now, half of it's still for baseball. I get baseball's huge in Berkeley, but it would be great to see that soccer field instead of being a future, um, implementation, but maybe that happens sooner. I know right now there is a basketball court. It looks like that's being completely demolished. We're just trying to think of, you know, well-rounded instead of it being so focused on baseball. We're a soccer family, basketball. It would just be nice to see a little bit more of those activities in that space. Um, super, super, again, I'm going to express it again, we want that splash pad. Again, we have two little kids under four, and that will be an amazing thing for us to walk to and having an updated, um, park facility, restrooms. We're overall super happy with this happening in our community. Um, but yeah, I just had that question about the baseball fields and why. That stayed, and there seems like to be that there is more green space to potentially put in a basketball court or something of that nature. So with that, I will mute myself.
Thank you very much. Uh, oh, I do see a hand raised. Scott Clowston. Oh, I'm having trouble hearing you. Looks like your audio is not connected. Scott, why don't we come back to you in a second?
Can you hear me better now?
We can.
Okay, yeah, sorry, it's the, had to get the work headset. Um, yeah, so Scott Clowston, uh, nineteen ninety-two Phillips Avenue, um, which is Phillips and Cambridge. Um, so, so yeah, I just wanted to echo, you know, some of the comments that I've heard so far, which were Ben mentioning, um, uh, you know, kind of the, the parking troubles. Really, it only manifests itself during, uh, you know, the Steelers' football practice, um, where, you know, both sides of the street are completely, uh, parked there and, um, turns into kind of a one-way street. And then with the intersection of Phillips, it can become dangerous with kind of blind, um, turning and whatnot. So it is a bit of a hazard there. Um, but also I think the, um, you know, so just kind of a little bit worried about the, uh, you know, the increased, um, traffic. And I think one potential solution, which I've seen on other parts of, of, um, Berkeley is having, you know, uh, the south side of Cambridge potentially, like, no parking on that side, right? Because our garage is on, um, uh, Cambridge. So during football season, sometimes we can't even get out of our garage because someone, you know, parked in front of it or, um, you know, makes it pretty difficult. So it's just kind of more of a, um, and I think that's a little bit of a selfish concern, but, um, you know, I think the, overall, I think the splash pad and, uh, you know, the, you know, the kind of the, the audience and, and the crowd, um, you know, could be a, um, you know, a pretty obvious concern. But, you know, I think in the end, as long as, you know, the, the concerns are, you know, managed, I think, you know, it's going to be a, a net positive for, you know, the community and everything. So that's really all.
Thank you. All right. So I do see a few individuals that have already had their, uh, hands raised. Uh, just to let you know, um, three minutes, uh, you know, when you had to speak, if you have any additional statements, you can always email planning@berklemish.net. Again, that's planning@berklemish.net. With that, Kristen, I don't think I'm seeing any other hands raised, so I can hand it. Oh, there's one more. Okay. Gary, go right ahead.
Hi, guys. Uh, Gary Katoen, I live on the corner, so I got my own splash pad pool. I've lived here for, uh, twenty-plus years and I can tell you, oh, if I make some comments that you've already covered in some kind of handout or something, then I apologize. I think it's fantastic that you're going to develop this, uh, green space and do all the stuff. I'm not going to go over everybody else. They've already articulated very well the concerns, the parking and so, so forth. The three-lot property just east of my place, uh, I don't know what's going on with that. Um, but if that does get turned into additional parking or something, then I might have concern of some kind of sound deadening wall or something. Unless you want to buy my house for a million bucks or something, that'd be fine. I'll, I'll move out. But, um, I've just been privileged, and really, it's been fun with, uh, the girls next door playing softball, uh, when the adults were there playing kickball and the things like that a few years back. Uh, my fence is used as a latrine and things like that. It doesn't bother me. That, that bothered a lot of people, you know, I just, everybody's having fun. But I am a bit concerned about the security, and I'm sure we'll handle that properly. You guys just didn't think about this yesterday. So I'm sure you're covering all the bases. And, um, uh, so that, that's the only thing. There may be a little bit of noise abatement or something that you, that made is, that come up. And I'm sure once it opens up, you know, it'll be inundated with five times more people than it can accommodate, but it'll settle down, uh, you know. And I think it's a, a, a great time to, to get that going. Um, and I don't know, I guess I'll, I'll talk to the city or something because I really kind of want to know what's happening with the, uh, the, the three-unit space just east of me. But, uh, so that's, that's my concern. And, um, I think the rest of it, it'll probably work out fine. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Any other hands? I don't see anybody raising.
All set?
Yes, we are all set.
Okay, did we receive any emails on this? Erin, that probably to you.
Just, just the one email that I had included in your packet from, um, Mr. and Mrs. Krug.
Okay.
Yeah, I received one, sorry, from, from Ben. Or, or more, I think, uh, sorry if I said your last name wrong.
Okay, um, so I see that Commissioners Trotto and Patterson have their hands raised right now. But before we get into that, I'm hoping that, um, Erin and Teresa and our representatives from HRC can start to address some of these concerns. It was a rather lengthy list. I tried to write them all down. Um, so we'll try to, um, keep track as you go through them. But if you just want to start, uh, maybe with parking was mentioned several times, as was traffic.
Sure. Um, yeah, I, I, I was taking notes as well. So if I forget anything, please remind me. I'm going to have, uh, probably Eddie talk a little bit about, um, what we're going to do for the splash pad drainage. Um, as far as parking, um, as, um, was identified, it's in the plan to add on-street parking on Cambridge. Um, however, due to funding, um, and some of our capital changing this year, um, it's been pushed back, uh, to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We have, and I've told other people this, explored the possibility of additional parking on the north side of the park. Um, we haven't developed that plan further at this point, but we understand it is an issue. One of the things that I am encouraged by is that I think that the usage of the park, uh, some of the heavier usage for the splash pad and for the play structure will be at times that are not heavy usage for the, the two fields we use are softball only. And when their games are, is typically in the evenings. Um, uh, it's, in regards to the Steelers, um, I've had conversations with them dating back to two thousand and sixteen, um, as I know other people in the city have. Um, we've had other open meetings and, and, and that's been a topic of conversation. We have, um, identified the outfield of Lazenby as a possibility for them to be able to practice there, which would alleviate some of that traffic. Um, there will also still be green space. It's a question of whether or not, um, they feel that it's enough on both the south end and the north end, there is open green space, um, which also sort of gets to the issue of there will be some space for at least small games of, uh, soccer, um, in that open green space. Um, but we do feel that we have another space, uh, possible for the Steelers where there is an actual lot, um, at Lazenby, um, with the, the school there, um, and then also on-street parking. Um, so the, 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 again, the parking, we're, we're going to add Cambridge, we're going to explore the possibility of a north lot at some point. Um, I cannot answer what's happening with the other three lots. I wish that I could, and, and, and I know that a lot of people are eager to know that. Um, unfortunately, that's outside of, uh, my scope. Um, a possible future basketball court, uh, we are taking away this one because of where the splash pad, the restrooms, and the play structure are going. It is possible in the future that we could add a court. Um, at this point, we do not have that in the plans. And as far as, uh, splash pad being wanted, um, it was identified as the number one thing in our last five-year plan that was done in two thousand and fifteen, uh, that the residents, uh, were asking for. Um, and then when we did this plan and had several, again, open meetings and a survey in two thousand and sixteen, it was also heavily identified, um, as people wanting that in this space. Um, crosswalks and some of the danger of people not stopping at the stop signs, uh, when I responded to some emails, I had, uh, responded that I would speak with our public safety about that. That's an issue to involve more than obviously, uh, just our department. And that's something that we absolutely will plan to do. Um, talking a little bit about some of the safety features and also the usage of the park, obviously all of our parks are dawned dusk and this will be as well. However, the splash pad will have specific hours. Uh, water doesn't just run as it's going on, it's a sensor. And so someone has to actually be there using it. But you can't start it. Uh, right now we're exploring the hours of either ten to eight or eleven to eight. And again, we're talking most likely Memorial Day to Labor Day, maybe give or take a few days. Um, so this isn't a, a year-round three thing. The bathrooms will be, will not be heated, so they will be used from April to November. Basically, probably April first to November first is usually pretty typical of restrooms like this. They will be locked in the evening electronically, um, to the point of the upkeep of the restrooms. I completely agree. I think that's a great point. And we have built into our, um, custodial, um, to have, or into our maintenance plan to have additional funds to have cleaning of both this restroom and actually the concession restroom, because we're, we're fully aware of that. So I, I sincerely appreciate that comment and agree. Um, I think that's all that I have for now. Eddie, if, or Adriana, if you want to talk a little bit about some of what we're going to be doing for the utility lines and drainage with the splash pad, that would be great.
Sure, Teresa. Um, regarding drainage, first of all, probably three or four years ago now, there were a series of, uh, perforated drain pipes and some solid pipes as well, some inlets that were installed, uh, in this park, um, because there were some previous drainage issues. Um, we did handle some of that at the time. So there has been improvements made in the last few years. Uh, regarding the splash pad, now there will be, uh, a drain system underneath the splash pad that will be collecting the water, which is technically called gray water. Um, and that will then discharge to the city line, which runs through the middle of the park, basically. So the drainage from, uh, the splash pad will be addressed and handled and taken into the city sewers. Um, and then as far as if there are, depending on how many pathways, uh, are constructed, the, as part of the grant, the type of pathway which we're supposed to construct is a pervious or porous pavement, uh, meaning that this pavement will drain. Um, it's not going to cause, uh, it's not an impervious surface, basically. So in order to do that, you have to improve, uh, the subbase. So the cross-section we have in the plans calls for about two and a half feet of different types of aggregate, which will aid in the drainage of any water that were to fall on these pathways. So I guess in essence, what I'm saying is that with each, with each feature, um, that will become part of this park, uh, the drainage will be handled, uh, in different ways. And there also will be underneath the pathways, by the way, there will be also perforated drainage pipe, which will then collect the water and then again discharge to a nearby sewer, existing sewer.
Okay. Um, the status of the vacant lot at Phillips and Oxford, I think that was brought up? Any comments on that?
Um, that one I'll have to look into. That I don't know the, I don't know the status of, of that off the top of my head. But I can look into that and, um, and, and reach out to, to that interested person.
Okay, I believe that was the first speaker. Or, I'm sorry, nope, somewhere in the middle.
That was, uh, Mr. Gary Katoen? Is that right?
Yep. Um, let's see. Uh, there was a co, or a question about the future parking and whether or not that would require any variances and what assurances the residents would be given, um, that their, their property would not become non-conforming. I'm assuming that was the intent of the question.
Yeah. So, um, if there is going to be any additional parking, um, proposed, uh, obviously it's outside of this scope. And if it comes back, um, there are some standards and separation distance from, um, residential properties. Um, and then anything that's developed will have to come back for, uh, additional site plan approval. So that would be something that the planning commission would look at once again. If there were any variances that would be required, it would then go before, uh, the zoning board.
Okay, so that would come back before us and residents would have the opportunity to comment on that again. And the planning commission, um, would have the opportunity to look at those plans again at that point.
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I think that that's everything. I think that was all the questions. Um, Erin and Teresa, was there anything that you had written down that wasn't addressed?
No.
Okay. So now I'm going to start getting into commission comments. Um, Commissioner Trotto, you've been waiting very patiently.
Okay. Um, couple of questions. The Berkeley ordinance for parks requires thirty-four parking spots or thirty-six parking spots per playing field. How many parking spots do they currently propose on the drive?
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you, can you repeat the question?
How many parking spots are currently proposed in the drawing? Our ordinance requires thirty-four parking spots per playing field? And I can't see the quantity of spots based on the drawing you have.
Can you answer to that, Eddie? I don't know how many, I don't know how many you're proposing.
Proposed on Cambridge, I think, Eddie, is it ten, is it like ten to twelve, I believe?
Total, total spots.
Of what we have now?
Yes. Because right now I've seen thirty, three playing fields that you have proposed. We have two, put two baseball fields in the soccer field. Plus you have the splash pad. So you need at least roughly a hundred spots. I'm not seeing one hundred spots there.
It, it's not exactly a soccer field. It's an open green space. I said that it could be used like for practice, but it's not a soccer field, like a built-in soccer field.
Well, I, I have, that's a whole nother problem I have though. But, um, I mean, right now, just the two-by-it's on for quarter sixty-eight spots. And I, I still don't even see sixty-eight spots, plus you're adding a splash pad. So you're, you're missing, I mean, how do we accommodate for the quantity of spots necessary for the splash pad?
Yeah, I, I guess I wasn't aware of the thirty-four spot rule. I mean, looking at all of our other baseball fields and parks, um, that, that would be tough to get to.
I can tell you, if somebody lived on Phillips and somebody lived on Bacon, that parking area is a disaster during football season and during baseball season too. Um, I, I lived just south of it in nineteen twelve Bacon for seven years. And I lived up at eighteen, eighteen oh nine Phillips for about four years. And that area becomes extremely congested during football and baseball season. So right now, I already can tell you, you do not have enough because, I mean, I'm at the football field for the last three years. You know, there is not enough parking. So that's the first thing I have. Um, secondly, um, I know you said it's supposed to be a soccer field, but Catalpa Oaks has six premier soccer fields out there. You have an opportunity to make this a premier football area if you chose to. But right now, based on your design, you're basically telling them you do not want football there. Uh, I mean, it's, it's quite apparent the way that they've designed the pathways and anything else that there is in the football. If, if you could manipulate the pathways and move them even more adequate, you could put a premier football place in there and actually draw younger people over to our area to play football. But right now, I mean, you're basically.
I, I don't think that that's, I mean, I, again, this was part of a park plan that was done, um, with community input, um, uh, with, with meetings with other people. I mean, this was done four years ago. Um, so I don't think that this is necessarily something that I'm saying that I don't want football. I, I, I think that, uh...
Incorporate it into your plans. Odom Rock and Clark could easily draw a couple of football fields in there, half football fields for what you need on there. And make it a premier place to have, draw kids in, to bring it, make it a draw for the community. I mean, the splash pad is great if you have younger kids. But, I mean, my kids are at the point where a splash pad serves no purpose to them. It is a benefit to the community, but make it something else where there's a benefit to the community too. but make it something else where there's a benefit to football players and what's the benefit? I mean, you could put three, four football fields on there and make it with the right pathways, a more versatile area. And as for the parking, I can tell you right now, there's nowhere near enough parking. What needs to be, needs to be held. That's my comments.
If, if I may, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This is a city-owned piece of property and certainly we want to comply with all of the ordinances and everything that we need to. But a city-owned property does not necessarily have to comply with all of the ordinances that are within its ordinance. So something like a parking, you know, that's very difficult to, to attain. We certainly want to make sure that we provide as much as humanly possible, but you know, we don't want to chew up a lot of open green space that can be used for recreation or impervious surface. Just to address that.
Yep, thank you, Ms. Lutao. Mr. Baumgarten, did you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to say much of the same things that the community development director were going to say as well. If we were starting from scratch and creating something new, I think we have to look at the standards. But as we discussed right in the previous agenda item, we're retrofitting something that's existing within the community. We're trying to maximize the parking as, as you can see. But we're going to have to work within the space confines that we do have and, and try to meet the best wishes of the community. So far, we have not seen an overwhelming push to, you know, tear out everything that's there and just put several football fields in. We're, we're trying to balance the uses across all the community's desires instead of meeting a singular one there. That's all I have, Ms. Mountier.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, thank you. I also sit on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as a member of that board. And I do want to thank Parks and Rec for bringing a plan to the planning commission that encompasses all of the meetings that we had. As Teresa said, we did hold public meetings for both the planning and the development of this park. I know Teresa and city staff did a great job working to get a grant, a substantial grant for our city to do this for the, for the citizens as well as not only a splash pad, but we're also proposing to put in parks, a restroom area and walking path and make the path, make it a universal space for many residents. So I just wanted to thank her. And I also, on that note, I don't know if I need to recuse myself from voting since I sit on both boards for this. If that's the decision of the commission, I can. I don't have any bias or interest in that, but I'll wait your reply on that.
I don't think that you have to unless you know of something different, Erin. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Patterson. Ms. Buckler?
Thank you. So I, I don't really think it's our place to redesign the purpose of the park. Like that's gone over for years and the Parks and Rec did a great job and there's some grant money issued. And I, I, the, the function of the park, I think is decided, our job is to determine if there's site plan issues that arise that do not maybe get contemplated as part of the overall process. And as far as parking goes, I, I would hate to see more parking when I think a lot of families are going to walk to this park and, you know, bike to the park. I want to make sure there's adequate bike parking would be my only, you know, concern is that there, there's enough of that. And that's easy enough to install because we should make it a, you know, kind of a, a much more pedestrian oriented destination and not encourage, you know, too much parking. And I, I think we could look at like one side street parking if that was a concern on, for, for that area. Not an unreasonable thought. I, I like that idea so that it doesn't create a safety issue. That's really the only thing. I, I, ours is not to argue the purpose of the park. I think it's to approve what has been done, not to redraw. Good job, Parks and Rec.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Kempner?
Okay, so as far as parking goes, I do know that, I mean, around any parks that have baseball or anything, it gets a little crazy because that's just how our, our city works. I do think that it's not going to be as much of a problem with this. My daughter's just getting out of splash pad days, but we went when it was really warm outside. After dinner wasn't usually our time of doing that, and that is when softball's doing the majority of their stuff. So I don't think you're going to have so much crossover that it's going to make it worse than it already is. And then my other question is trash cans. I do see that there's like a recycling center. But I don't see any trash cans like around the, the concrete seating area. And I'm just thinking like moms and swimming diapers and snacks for the kids. And do we have any more trash cans interspaced around that area?
Can I answer that? Yeah, it's a great question. They're not on the plan, but they, they absolutely will be. I mean, there's trash cans there now and, and we'll make sure that in those areas that they, that they're there. You see the new ones around the restroom, but, but there will be in other areas in the park similar to there are, there are right now.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben has his hand raised, but Tori, I believe that the time for public comment has passed. So if you have any additional comments, you can send them to, is it planning@berkleymish.net?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Richardson? You're, you're muted. There you go.
Okay, you did it. All right, and then you can mute me whenever you want, I guess. But I agree with Commissioner Buckler. I, I don't think it's our place to rewrite the plan that's, that's presented. It's gone through an elaborate process lasting years. And I personally think it's an exciting plan, but our, our role is more limited. And, you know, we have to, we have to find that it meets the criteria of the ordinance. And I, I have a little pause over criteria two and three, no adverse effect on roads or sidewalks. And I think the third one is pedestrian vehicle, vehicular areas are designed for safety, convenience and complement adjacent site design. And while I'm confident that a parking plan and a vehicular plan can be achieved which is satisfactory, I kind of find, I, I think we're kind of flying a little blind on that. How many, has there been any projection on how many people are likely to use the, the splash pad amenity? I mean, we must know how many kids can be in it at any one time. There must be some sort of standard on that. And, you know, we need, we can probably have, to get a feel for, you know, what its usage might be. And from that, what the parking requirements might be. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I have a little bit of a concern that we're, you know, we're just not adequately addressing the, the parking part of this. And I say that appreciating the comments that others have made, that this will be different hours and so forth. But there is a, a problem around there right now. And we're going to bring more people to the area. And I think, I think the concerns about parking are legitimate. I, I would just like some more information about, you know, the thinking on parking. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. I would echo that statement. I don't know if there's been any research or anything done into how other areas splash pads accommodate any needed parking, particularly in older neighborhoods where we have lots of inability to add those types of facilities? Any comment on that?
Not in an older neighborhood. A lot of times these are put at parks that have, you know, like an actual lot, which is why I agree. And I, and I think that some of us will be, you know, seeing what happens in that first year. And again, we do have that built in to come back and ask for that on street parking after the first summer that this is in. And if at that time, you know, it really is a problem, I think that looking at that north side makes sense for an actual lot. As far as how many people can be in the splash pad with the size that we have now, typically for that size, you're, you're going to have a max of thirty to forty. Again, our hope is that, like one of the, I think one of the commissioners said, not everybody will be driving to there. There will be people walking or biking. And so that's the parking that's there. But I, I completely understand. And we can't assure that there won't be some people parking on the street as some, similar to there is now, you know, when there is heavy traffic at other parks or for games.
Okay, so then we'll be using that first year kind of as a test case to see if additional parking is needed. And if it is, maybe get an idea of how much would be required?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, are there any other comments from commissioners? I don't see anyone with their hand raised right now. If not, you are looking for a motion of approval from us. So if there are no other comments, is anyone wanting to make a motion?
I can.
Okay.
Let me pull up the agenda just to get the numbers off. I make a motion to approve. Now it's not pulling up. SB dash zero two dash two zero Oxford Merchant Park.
Is there a second from anyone? Okay, so motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Ms. Buckler. I will go down the list to see if anyone has any additional comments or amendments to the motion. Lisa?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt, you have your hand raised.
I was just going to say, if we make everybody else in the city abide by our parking rules, I feel that the city should at least abide by their parking rule. I know this is an outstanding situation, but I have lived in that area. I know exactly what it's like over there. I thought they did it parking for years and I know what it's like to drive by this on a regular basis. I don't feel this is going to help the situation. It's going to make it much worse.
Okay. So I'm going to take it you don't have any amendments to the motion right now, but comments noted. Tim?
No comments.
Michelle? Marty? No? Okay. Mark?
Just for clarification, the parking element of this will come back in front of us or may come back in front of us?
I think if they're doing any more substantial site plan changes, it will be required to come back for site plan approval. Is that right, Erin?
Yes, and we do have capital funding built in for additional spots.
Okay. Okay, and Greg, I imagine no changes to your?
No changes.
Okay. Ms. Lutao, could you call the role, please?
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
She muted.
Marty?
On mute. I haven't touched anything, but anyway, I said yes.
Trotto?
No.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Newred?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kepalansky?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the next item, a discussion of zoning ordinance text amendment section one thirty-eight two nine eight to remove references to, I'm assuming that's Boca?
Boca.
Ms. Lutao, do you have any staff report on this item?
Yes, I'd like to reference my review letter that was included in the packet. This is in reference to section one thirty-eight dash two ninety-eight to remove Boca references within the ordinance. Boca, the Boca code is outdated and has been for, for several, several years. So it's necessary to remove all references of Boca as they're no longer applicable. We've gone through the rest of our code of ordinances and removed Boca and any other outdated code reference to bring everything up to, up to standard. This is the one that was referenced in the zoning ordinance, so therefore it needed to come before planning commission for its necessary review and approval. I have also included in the packet the ordinance language and the proposed revision, section one thirty-eight dash two ninety-eight in which the two references to Boca related to mobile homes in single-family residential districts is removed to ensure that any development is in compliance with the Michigan residential code. And I, if that's okay with the planning commission, we would set a public hearing and send that over to city council.
Okay. Open it up to the commission. I, I don't think there's anyone who wants to comment on this one. Is that correct? I don't see anyone.
I don't see any public comments.
Oh, public comment, never mind.
Yep. Okay, over to the commission? Marty?
I just want to clarify that several years, I believe the last issue was nineteen ninety-six of Boca.
Nineteen ninety-six, correct.
Yeah, two thousand went to the Michigan building code. So it's been twenty-something, twenty-four years. And this is the last one? This is the only spot that shows up?
This is the only spot in the zoning code that it shows up was in this, this particular section. And like I said, we, we've eradicated all the other ones from the code ordinances and they've already gone to city council for their first reading last, the, the last meeting. These ones take a little bit longer, but theirs was more applicable to building code and not mobile homes. So we wanted to get those through as quickly as possible.
Well, that makes sense. Apparently we don't look at the mobile homes ordinance too often, so that's fine.
All set? Okay. Any other comments on this one or questions from the commission? Seems pretty straightforward. Or if anyone wants to make a motion? Or I guess you don't need a motion. You're just looking for the okay from us?
Yeah, we just need to set a public hearing. So if everyone's good with moving forward, we can just, I'll set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay, I don't see anyone else, so that sounds good. Okay, so then we will move on to the next agenda item, another discussion item, the local business district site regulations. Section one thirty-eight five twenty-six, the schedule of regulations. Go ahead, Ms. Lutao.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to reference my May fifteenth, twenty twenty review letter. In reviewing some of the ordinances that we have here in the city, it became clear that the local business district does not have a line item in the schedule of regulations the way it's currently written. So this has been something that we wanted to, to bring forth. I looked back at the amendments that were done and it looks like in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, there were some major changes that were done, not only to the local business district as it's written in the text, but also in the schedule of regulations. And somewhere in there, it looks like it had been inadvertently missed due to the, the, the number of changes that were done. There haven't been any site improve, any major site improvements to any of the parcels located in the nine, the nine parcels within that district. And that district is located on the north side of Twelve Mile, east of, east of Henley, just, and then two parcels on the other side of Berkeley. Vice versa. So there's only nine parcels that are, are included in this district. But, you know, we want to make sure that we get this fixed and correct on the books as we move forward with, with any developments. Because we don't know what's coming around the corner. I have included the adopted ordinance amendments from two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, so we can reference what was in the code of ordinances at one point and when it was changed, as well as a proposed revised table that includes the regulations for the LB district, which is consistent with the existing buildings, the way they're currently written, and the regulations that were in place in two thousand and seven prior to the omission in two thousand and eight. It is also in line with the regulations of the Coolidge District, the Gateway District, Eleven Mile and the Industrial District. It is also in line with the regulations of the Coolidge District, the Gateway District, eleven mile and the Industrial District. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I don't see anyone with their hand raised right now, so these are basically putting back what was there in two thousand seven.
Yes.
Okay. And given what we've talked about with the master plan and how that, that implementation would take place. This could theoretically be somewhat of a placeholder until we look at updating everything.
Correct, yes. You know, if, anything that we do with some of these things right now could be, I mean, aside from Boca, we're not gonna go back to Boca. But, you know, some of these things that we're changing now, this could, could be changed in, in, you know, in a year or so. But if there was anything that came before the planning commission, you know, next month, we wouldn't have any regulations to. To limit their, the construction. So we want to make sure that we get this done quickly.
Okay, any comments or questions from anyone? Nothing? Okay.
Looked that it was caught.
Yes, that is great. I, I don't have anything. It makes sense to put it back in.
Yeah, it, it, to echo Mr. Murad, it's good it was caught because if something did happen, we'd be out there scratching our heads what to make it and. That would open us up to a lot of other things, so I'm glad this was caught. And your values. Are these the values that were there prior to two thousand eight?
Yes, these were the ones that were there in two thousand seven. I included those, those previous amendments. In the packet, just so you had a frame of reference, but yes.
Okay. So good. And they're fair. I mean, those are the fair values for heights and setbacks and all that. That makes a lot of sense in that district. No, that's fine.
Okay, I don't see anyone else, so I think you are good to move forward and set this for a public hearing. Okay, next up we have the annual planning report and work plan.
So. Yes, thank you. So per the requirement of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Planning commission is to make an annual written report to the legislative body, to the city council. Informing them of the status and operations of the planning activities, including any recommendations that were done throughout the year. And anything related to the planning and development. So this is that report. The planning commission held twelve meetings during two thousand nineteen, reviewed nine site plans. Recommended two special land uses, two rezonings and five zoning text amendments. I have included a brief overview of those projects separated into categories, site plan review, special land use and the like. And giving you kind of an update as to where we stand currently with those projects, just so you're all aware and brought up to speed. Additionally, I've included a couple of items for the twenty twenty work plan. These are things that we're, we're working on currently. Or will be working on in the foreseeable future. One of them is to update the community master plan, which we are all aware of. We are working towards our redevelopment ready community certification. One big part of that is the master plan, so once we have that component in place, we can start working through some of the other. Items on that self evaluation. And then the zoning ordinance technical review, which comes, I mean, usually comes immediately after the community master plan. So these three things really all kind of tie into one another and we, we look forward to, to embarking on all of these wonderful projects. So if the planning commission doesn't have anything they'd like to add or change, this report will go to the city council. In, in reference to the requirement from the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Okay, I don't, I don't have anything. Thank you for putting that together, Erin. Anyone have anything on this?
I do.
I just wanna.
What does city council do with this? Just acknowledge it?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a requirement for R R C too, right?
Understood, yes. Well done though, by the way, so yeah, okay.
Who else tried to chime in there?
I, I did, Greg. I just wanted to say, same thing Marty said to Erin, great job. It was easy to read. Really laid out what we've done as a commission and, and I liked the updates on all the projects. Sometimes we forget about the projects maybe that we approve or. Don't know what's happening with them and you guys, you did a great job, so thank you for this.
Anyone else?
It's nice to see that some of those projects that are done.
Getting, getting really close to getting their building permits, so we're really excited about some of them finally coming to fruition.
How close is La Salle?
La Salle, they're working through their last little bit of site engineering and site plan, but they're, they're very close.
Good.
Okay, nothing else? Okay. And then that brings us to liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I can report on, on. Chamber, so it's been a tough year, tough summer. Everything keeps getting canceled, but you know, that's part of what's going on right now. So we've had some discussion in regards to like. Expediting or some way of helping some of these businesses, mostly like restaurants. Because, you know, when, when we are opened up, we know that they're not gonna be allowed a hundred percent capacity. And it would really be helpful to them if there was a quick and easy way to expedite outdoor seating for some. I know that we have it in our ordinance, but I think the way the ordinance reads is they come before us, we grant it or recommend it to council. Council then has to approve it and then they get the go ahead. So, you know, we're already at the end of May. So, because council, I think, is only meeting once a month now, starting in June. So it could really slow down the process where they'll miss the whole season. So it would be nice if we could. Working with the city, the admins in the city, come up with some temporary way to expedite that process.
Okay, thanks, Tim, for the chamber update. Matt?
D D A met last week or two ago, weekends day and. Jennifer has started taking over and running everything over there very well. They did get all the Mogo bikes approved. And I think they were actually installed, at least the stations were. I don't know if the bikes are out there yet, but I know that was on the agenda that they're supposed to install last week. I know that the one on Wakefield was installed sometime last week. I saw it the other day. That's the D D A update. Oh, they were also working on wayfinding too.
Okay.
That's supposedly gonna start happening soon.
Good to know. Anyone else?
Liaison. Report on steering committee.
Thanks, Lisa.
So today was our second webinar. It was current, current conditions in the city. And they basically give a short presentation and then there's a question and answer session that follows it. So we're kind of moving through there. The following, the next coming up weeks, when we start to get into parking and housing and stuff, I'm hoping that we'll have a lot more public. But you can't really see from the side how many non-board members or council members or something are, are participating in it. So hopefully as we get to more of the hot topics, we will see more new names pop up or, or more the community.
Can I interrupt you for a second, Lisa? I have a quick question on that. So I know we were sent the schedule and I'm just looking at it now. So the next one is Tuesday, June second at six, is that right?
Yes.
So what is the drop in day slash time? What's the drop in?
So that is if for people who couldn't make the first webinar or have any additional questions, they can just drop in. And give suggestions, ask questions. They kind of really quickly recap what they've done on the webinar. And it's kind of another catch up date to try and catch more people.
Okay, so like a makeup date kind of?
Yeah.
It's very similar, if I may, it's very similar to like a drop in open house where if you just come in and you just want to ask any kind of question, we're, we're, we're there to answer questions.
Got it.
I, I just have a question. Are these recorded and posted or no?
The webinars are recorded and posted, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then one more thing, the survey, we are super close to a thousand responses. Like I think we're like three or four off. So it closes at the end of the week. So if anybody hasn't taken it or anybody knows a neighborhood hasn't taken it, tell them to get on and, and do the survey.
That is an amazing response, right? That's really good.
Have, have we seen whether there's a lot of duplicates? People doing it more than once?
We haven't gotten any of that information yet, Erin.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if they've delved that far into their responses as of yet. Certainly they, they will be looking at that.
Are you all set, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other updates, liaison reports? Okay, so that brings us to staff and commissioner comments, and I know Erin, I'd asked you to comment on what we're doing and, and Tim. Kind of alluded to that too, in order to help businesses when they reopen and are able to reopen.
Yes. Yeah, I do have a couple of things, so I'll, I'll jump right in with that. You know, city staff is, is well aware that, you know, we know our businesses are hurting and we really want to make sure that we can do anything we possibly can to, to help them. As Mr. Murad said, in order for a, a restaurant to, to allow for outdoor dining. It's, it's a requirement to come before the planning commission for special land use approval. So that, that requires the public hearing, recommendation and going to city council. That is a very lengthy, time consuming process. And by the time they work to submit their application, the season's over. So we are working with the city attorney, city staff is working with the city attorney and with council. And we're looking at ways that we can provide relief for those, for those types of businesses. Discussions are ongoing, so I can't give you any more details than that unfortunately at this moment. But we really hope to have something in place very soon in order to provide them relief because we are getting into the, to the warmer, warmer season of the year. If you have any specific questions related to this, anyone can feel free to email me. My, my email address is e schluto at berkeleymish.net. If you have specific questions, I'll be sure to update you as we, as we have, have updates to provide some.
So the city then is looking at taking care of this on the, the council level at this point?
We're looking at implementing or asking council to make a resolution to temporarily relieve some of these requirements. However, I can't get into any specifics on how we're going to do that. This is just one, one way that we're looking at. Providing some temporary relief for, for those businesses impacted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
So just a couple more things. So yeah, the master plan, we're working through the, the webinar series as Ms. Kepner said. We have about nine hundred and ninety-seven responses as of this morning, so keep them coming if you guys haven't responded yet. If anyone knows someone who needs a hard copy of the survey, who has not received it or doesn't have access to the internet at home. Have them email or have someone call or email at masterplan@berkeleymish.net. And we will make sure to get them a hard copy delivered into their mailbox. There are three commissioners whose appointments are set to expire this year. Commissioner Buckler, Commissioner Murad and Chair Kapalansky. So if you're looking to. Just continue to serve on the, on the commission, if you can get your. Information to us, so we can make sure we can get that moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go down the list now of. Any other commissioners for comments? I'll just ask each one individually. Lisa, any additional comments?
No.
Tim?
No.
Michelle?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So besides outdoor dining for the restaurants, the local businesses. I think the city staff also needs to address things like curbside pickup and potential, you know, drop off lanes. And particularly with the construction on twelve mile, like how's that gonna work for all these businesses? I feel like these, these businesses are gonna be totally hamstrung between the, the time it's going to take to get some approval. We don't know when the governor's gonna open back up. She gave up north four days, four days to open their rest, you know, to, you can open your restaurants, go. And this plan, and I know we're talking about it, but I sent comments to you some time ago on this. And I know, and I've heard from some of the business owners, they're not getting the responses that they need. So I think there needs to be a plan out there. And somewhat decided. I know there's legal issues that have to be dealt with, but it's more than just whether or not they can have outdoor dining. And how we can waive that. There's, there's a whole host of issues that need to be taken care of because with, you know, if, if, if. They can't be hamstring through the summer and expect that they'll still be there in the fall and we could be a very empty downtown. And on both Coolidge and twelve mile, with all the already vacant property we have that's currently optioned. For some upcoming permits or licenses for the marijuana establishments, we could end up with like a huge vacancy rate. So I, I implore you to do everything you possibly can, as fast as you can, engage the D D A, engage the chamber. And get something moving so they have some certainty because they have everything but certainty on the state level. With, with respect to how to deal with their businesses. So that's it.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Marty?
No additional comments.
Mark?
I just wanna thank staff for the, the outstanding job that they did preparing us for tonight's meeting. I, I really thought the staff work was exceptional this month and I know they got a lot on their plate and. Some very unusual, if not adverse circumstances that they're putting this stuff together. Another comment is it looks like Commissioner Smith had a great Memorial Day weekend there. I mean, if you judge by the. The room that he's in, it looked, looked like he had a lot of fun. That's it.
Okay, Greg?
Uh, nothing further.
Matt?
Um, I have one comment. On twelve mile recently, driving down around six o'clock, you get near Dairy Queen, it's a disaster. I don't know if there's anything we can do in the planning commission, but the line for the drive through is literally backed up past seven eleven. I don't know if the police need to get involved or if something needs to change or what they could do or what we could do, but it's becoming a safety hazard almost. Any recommendations on that?
We can certainly pass on, you know, your concern to public safety and see if there's something that they can do on that, on that front during, during the peak, peak times.
I mean, I know it wasn't expected to be this way in the beginning, but I mean, it's reaching an issue right now, so.
And hopefully once we're allowed to go inside Dairy Queen, that, that'll ease up a bit, but I've noticed that too.
Probably temporary.
Yeah. The only other comment I guess I have is I know that Oakland County Planning and Economic Development has several resources out there for small businesses. And kits and, and helping them get P P E and things like that. So that's available too. Erin, I don't know if you've had the chance to connect with them, but I know they're putting some resources together too. We wouldn't want to duplicate efforts. I, I don't have anything else at this time. I assume our next meeting as of right now would be in person?
The governor has extended the virtual meetings to the end of June, so we will have our June meeting in this virtual realm again.
Okay, so July maybe then?
Unless you extend it, then yes, we'll plan for July, July meeting in person.
Okay. Alright, then I don't think we have anything else. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I can.
Erin, could you call the roll, please?
Patterson?
He already adjourned.
Oh, no, Greg, you're muted.
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Alright, we'll see.
Michelle, did you have something or you're good?
Wait a minute, everybody.
Bye bye.